Meeting of Sylvania City Council for July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here.
McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson? Absent. This is, or I'm sorry, Ms. Stowe?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall? Is absent.
Um, both Mr. Richardson and Mrs. Westfall are excused. And five members of City Council are present, so a quorum does exist. Uh, we welcome our guests here. Um, we'll move right to our Pledge of Allegiance this meeting led by Ms. Stowe.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Additions to the agenda, I'd like to add as for A introduction, introduction of our new police officer. Mr. Frye, do you have any additions to the addend?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a, I don't, I'm not sure exactly where it should go, a brief conversation about the fireworks, um, situation.
Let's put it down as thirteen. Other members of City Council, additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Sanford? Mr. Schroyer? Captain New Baker? Mr. Aller? Mrs. Brining?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our agenda is approved for this evening's meeting. Agenda item four is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on June twentieth. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move adoption of the meeting minutes for the council meeting of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. As submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes, as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. Added Agenda Item four A is the introduction of our new police officer. Over the years, we've made it, uh, an effort to bring all these officers in so that you can meet them and they can meet you. We have a new hire, we've been doing a lot of hires in the last few years as officers retire. So, Captain, take it away.
News, our new, uh, police officer. Mitchell, or Regina.
Welcome.
So Mitchell, or Mitch, as he prefers to be referred to, uh, days his very first day for working streets. Actually been with us for two weeks. During those first two weeks, we do things like get all the city paperwork straight away, we go to the range, um, get all the preliminary items to get in ready so that once he gets his off to the race. That's somewhere we lucky Mitch comes to switch off. It's funny, Mitch never talked to me the other day, and this is, this is like his estimated vacation. Alright.
How long will he be on?
So, uh, identified to ask. Oh, we also one of our still training officer. Ask. Supervise the, uh, the F ask. And then, and then go to Captain New Baker. Thank you all. Thanks.
Okay, back to the published agenda, we're up to Agenda Item five. These are annual assessment ordinances. I think you've seen some of this in the past. Um, these are annual events, we do them this time of the year, so they get on the tax duplicate properly for next year's tax bills that come out in January. They're for ditch maintenance, street lighting, and tree maintenance. Um, Kevin, I believe the ditch maintenance one was reworked a few years ago. And this year, street lighting has a new calculation method. Um, we did not, it, it's gone from some valuation to front footage. Um, it is not intended to raise more money. Had to make some corrections in it. Um, or Hanum's son came forward and pointed out that there were corner properties that were being assessed on both frontages, and that's been straightened out.
He figured that out on his own.
That he did. And he explained to me how it happened.
Just all the number?
Yeah. Um, so I think that's all squared away, but we need to get these passed for our special tax assessment. Um, I'm gonna have Mr. McCann do the first of them as, uh, the representative chair of utilities and also a member of the Street Committee that's here. Mr. McCann, you get the first two.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you. It, can you characterize the rates of last year versus what we're, uh, going to this year? As I see on the, uh, the first one, say, small residential, less than nine thousand nine hundred square feet, fifteen dollars a year. So how would that compare with last year? Do we know?
I'm changed.
Okay, and then, uh,
It is a change from a few years ago.
The calculation or the rate?
Ditch.
Sounds about right.
Ops. Standardize. Unresi- based on that was done at the rates that are in so long.
So it, it looks like with the rate that you came up with some four years ago, it has worked well for the city regarding cost. Deliver. Great. Alright, I'll move ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Versus Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. Sixty-one, two thousand and twenty.
I'd like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number sixty-one dash twenty-twenty-two. To assess a special tax upon the lots and lands described, schedule referred to herein to pay a part, the cost and expense of providing for the construction, maintenance, repair, cleaning, and enclosing open drainage ditches within the corporate limits of the City of Sylvania for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. I move passage of Ordinance Number sixty-one dash twenty-twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-one, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-one, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Um, now on to the second one, which is for street lighting. Two, two thousand and twenty-two.
And I'll pose the same question to Mr. Aller. It, it, uh, I I am, I'm not seeing a rate. Is there a, uh, or did I miss it? Because I see the total cost.
That was in uh, the rate.
I do recall.
Went from eight to four. Different rates.
For the recollection. Alright, I'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number six-two dash twenty-twenty-two. Ordinance approving the assessments heretofore, authorizing by Resolution Number six dash twenty-twenty-two for street lighting, levying said assessments. I move for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-two dash twenty-twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-two, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-two, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to Agenda Item five C, proposed Ordinance sixty-three, two thousand and twenty-two, which is for tree maintenance. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, Ordinance Number sixty-three, twenty-twenty-two. To assess a special tax upon the lots and lands described in the schedule referred to herein pay a part of the cost and expense of providing for the removal and special treatment of shade trees for the purpose of controlling blight and disease of same for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets and within public right-of-way of the city for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Move for passage of Ordinance sixty-three, twenty-twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-three, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-three, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. These are our special assessments. We do not assess in Sylvania for snow removal or for leaf collection, as some municipalities do. Let's move on to Agenda Item six, which was proposed Ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and twenty-two. This is entered in agreement with on agreement with the Regional Addiction Diversion Program of the Board of Lucas County Commissioners. Brining?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, um, the Sylvania Municipal Court has participated in the, um, Regional Addiction Diversion Program since two thousand and fifteen. Um, the last agreement and increase in the rate was in two thousand and nineteen. This is a, there is an increase in the per diem rate, um, but the annual cost is, uh, fifteen thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars. Um, the court has requested, uh, that we, they continue to participate in this program. Um, and I believe it was the case in the past, I believe this is still the case, that this is actually paid out of the court's indigent fund. So it's not a, um, out of our general fund, a, a general fund expense. Um, and I've spoken with, uh, the probation officer at the court, and he's requested that this agreement be approved and authorized.
Thank you. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce it, Ordinance Number sixty-four, uh, dash twenty-twenty-two and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the, uh, for the Regional Addiction Diversion Program on behalf of the City of Sylvania, Ohio, with the Board of Lucas County Commissioners for the provision of court addiction diversion services through the Lucas County Court of Common Pleas Work Release Court Addiction Diversion Program, Sylvania Municipal Court. I move passage of Ordinance Number sixty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-four, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda Item seven is a similar issue, this one is with Lucas County for the Health District, um, contribution that we make every year. This is to extend our contract with the Health District for another year. Further comments on that, Mrs. Brining?
No, that's it, Mayor.
No change in price?
Nothing. Simply an extension of the term.
Is modified occasionally based on population and property value. No change this year. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number sixty-five dash two thousand and twenty-two and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an amended agreement with the chairman of the Lucas County General Health District Advisory Council for contract providing for the administration of health and environmental affairs in the Regional Combined Health District. I move passage of Ordinance Number sixty-five dash two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-five, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-five, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving to Agenda Item eight. This is part of our project to widen Monroe Street, improve the intersection at Silica, and we've also rolled the Silica Bridge into that same project. Um, I would like Service Director to tell us about this project, and then we but we do need to correct the number on your ordinance, it's in your packets. Might as well know the extent of what this is costing. Um, it's eight B. The number in the last line of the title is not thirty-eight thousand one forty-two, it is six hundred forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Mr. Aller can explain to us why it's so expensive and how we are handling this expense. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as part of the Monroe Silica Project, uh, obviously we have the, uh, crossing there, um, beside the, uh, courts building. Um, as part of the project with the, with the widening that's going on, that crossing, uh, also needs to be widened, uh, which means that the gates need to be modified. Um, there will be a, uh, center island, if you will, um, at the railroad track, um, with this new signal, uh, because of the width. It's, it's a railroad requirement. Um, as you, uh, I'm sure you've heard me say before, uh, you know, what the railroad, railroad wants, the railroad gets. Um, uh, we've had a lot of discussions as much as we could on this to try to minimize, uh, the costs and the needs, but uh, at the end of the day, their requirement, while we have to um, we've, yeah.
They were here first.
Yeah. Um, we have been successful, uh, we actually went through three different programs, uh, the first two we were unsuccessful with. Uh, but we have been successful, uh, this, uh, six hundred and forty-two thousand dollar expense, uh, we've been able to obtain a PUCO, P U C, Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, a grant in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, uh, to
How much three?
Three hundred and sixty. Uh, or fifty-six percent, uh, it, it is a percentage-based grant, so should the railroad costs come down, so will our grant. See? The grant basically will cover fifty-six percent of the, uh, project expense. And, and I'll note that that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that PUCO has, has, uh, agreed to is basically thirty-six percent of the budget. They only have a hun- a million dollars statewide, uh, to use on projects like this, and, and we were able to obtain three hundred and sixty thousand of it, so uh, they've been, uh, they were, they were good to work with. So, um, this agreement, uh, we initially had intended to bring this to you in two thousand and twenty-three when the project moves forward, but because of the PUCO grant, in order to get that locked into their, um, uh, funding cycle, uh, because they work on a July to uh, type, uh, budget, um, we needed to have the construction agreement in place execute the PUCO. So, we're coming to a li- a little earlier than we had planned on this, but, uh, uh, the end result is gonna be the same, so.
The expenditure will be next year?
It, and the expenditure will be next year, yeah.
So it'll be in next year's budget?
Yeah. Um, we recommend a, an agreement, um, it's a, a stan- pretty standard construction agreement with, uh, with the railroad company, and, uh, we recommend.
And the remainder of the expense is built into the construction budget already?
Yes, yeah, the remainder, uh, any cost that we would have is, is, uh, included in, in the, uh, construction budget. It also counts towards our, uh, percentage of the, of the project. Things like that, so thi- this isn't an additional expense, just part of our, uh, portion of the project.
Mr. Aller, a few questions. Um, the amounts that were previously approved, the thirty-eight grand and the eight thousand, that's the six forty-two includes those numbers? Or doesn't include those?
It does not include.
Okay.
Those previous numbers were for, uh, engineering services.
Okay.
Uh, this, this, uh, six hundred forty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars is for construction costs.
Got it. And you mentioned the island, or whatever the terminology of art is, with the railroad in the, in the center because of the width of the, this, once the project is completed. Are there any other changes, gates, or anything else that the community would see associated with this construction after it's completed? Are we gonna have, like, gates that come down like you would see in a lot of more heavily-traveled railroad, uh, crossings?
Unfortunately, it's gonna be a little more unsightly, um, uh, because again, because of the width. Um, the, the new requirement now is the, um, you know, when the gates go down, that it also blocks the pedestrian, um, access. Um, so because of that, there are gonna be, uh, heavier mast arms, if you, much like you'd see with the traffic signal. Um, it's, uh, those are the, one of the things that we tried very hard to talk them off of, and to no avail.
Yeah, so.
Unfortunate, um, but, again, they, they have their own safety fact, the, the safety things they have to be concerned about, I give it.
Right, understood, but a train traveling two miles an hour, I'm not, but whatever.
Yeah.
Rules are the rules.
There had been talk a few years ago of reinstalling the track north of where it currently stops at the grain elevator and reconnecting it with a line in Michigan to make delivery of grain to the port quicker than it is right now. Right now, it goes out across Route twenty, about Delta. We've heard nothing more about that. That would have resulted in three or four trains a day. But we're just not hearing anything about it. That's not why this is happening. One train goes across it. Estim- Alright. Any further questions for Mr. Aller? Now, we do have Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, and I think I gave you the wrong number. It's six hundred and forty-two thousand four twenty-three. I might have told you six forty-three thousand.
How long? Ordinance? Authorizing?
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-six, two thousand and twenty-two as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-six, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to Agenda Item nine. There are five, um, acquisitions of right-of-way for this same project included here. We have five council members here tonight, so I have one of your names on each one of these. Um, let's let Mr. Aller explain what we're doing, and then got five of them. With more to come in the future.
More to come in the future, yes. Uh, we, I imagine our August meeting will probably be, uh, with, uh, additional assessments that, that involved with the project. Um, the first one here is a, uh, in, in agreement with, uh, Toledo Lucas County Public Library, um, is for a permanent right-of-way take along the south side of Monroe Street, um, as well as, uh, temporary construction easement, uh, just to be used during the construction of the project. Um, the amount, uh, going to the, uh, library, agreed to with the library, is four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, these were anticipated expenses in this year's budget and, and were budgeted. Uh, we recommend the agreement.
Alright, we do have Ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two for this one, and Mr. Hanum, I have your name on it first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of Ordinance Number sixty-seven dash twenty-two, twenty-two, I will read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a purchase agreement with the Toledo Lucas County Public Library for the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project and Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project, dedicating the same for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. And I move adoption of Ordinance sixty-seven dash twenty, twenty-two as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance Number sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Going to the back page of our agenda, we're up to nine B. Um, this is a similar one. Mr.- Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also in the same project. This is for just a temporary construction easement with Louisville Title Agency. This is one of the properties of businesses across the street from Port Building. It's primarily a parking area. There is a building in the rear of it, but it's primarily parking lot is where this parcel stretches across. This was, this agreement was in the amount of 17,745 dollars, and we do recommend approval.
Mr. Aller, could you explain a little bit of how these numbers were reached? I mean, I'm sure some of it's based on the size of the land, right? But jumping from 4,000 for where we get a permanent easement parcel, or is this one, it's all a temporary one, but it's?
There are a lot of things taken into it. The appraisal companies that are used on these project, ODOT projects, take into thing the uses of the land, what is going to be impacted with the construction of the project and things of that nature. When you take a look at a business parcel that has operating businesses in it, that has more value than a school property or a city property or anything of that because of the operations that take place. I don't pretend to understand everything that appraisal companies go through on these, but I know that it's very structured and it's the same on every piece of property. And yeah, when you take a look at some of these numbers, it does make you kind of scratch your head and say how they come up with it. You know, they use the same formula, the same everything on every piece of property.
Well, it's nice to hear that this was done by a third party and that it uses a formula and it's not a, that this person is holding out and that's why they're getting 30,000.
Yeah, no, yeah, all of these were the offers made. They were the appraised value.
All right, we do have ordinance 68-2022 for this one. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 68-2022, accepting a temporary construction easement Louisville Title Agency for Northwest Ohio, Inc., trustee for the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project, Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project, dedicating the temporary easement for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of 17,745 dollars. Move for passage of ordinance 68-2022 as an emergency measure.
Second. Has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 68-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 68-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Up to Agenda Item 9C, Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next property is also a temporary construction easement. This property is under the name of Sylvania Limited Liability Company. It is the parcel directly adjacent to the railroad tracks in Monroe Street, right there. I always call it the old Dennis, what I always remember being. But it's that piece of property. This one, to your point, Mrs. Dow, this one increases to 33,550 dollars. I do know that this is a larger for construction, and there is to the wall, that retaining wall that's currently there, that will be put back because of, so we recommend approval of this easement.
We have ordinance 69-2022, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 69-2022, accepting a temporary construction easement from Sylvania Limited Liability Company for the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project and Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project, dedicating the temporary easement for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of 33,550 dollars. I move for passage of ordinance number 69-2022 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 69-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 69-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda Item 9D, Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next easement that we have before you is also a temporary construction easement. This agreement is with the Board of Sylvania Township Trustees. It's basically the fire station property, and we've talked with them. Obviously, ingress egress is a big issue with them during construction, and we'll continue to work with them during construction, obviously, and have come to an agreement on this property of 16,740 dollars and recommend approval.
We have ordinance 70-2022, Ms. Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 70-2022 and read by title only. Accepting a temporary construction easement from Board of Sylvania Township Trustees for the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project and Silica Drive Bridge Replacement Project, dedicating the temporary easement for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of 16,740 dollars. I move for passage of ordinance number 70-2022 as an emergency measure.
Second. Moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 70-2022 as an emergency measure. Mr. Hanam.
Yeah. Why are we paying the township for access to the project in front of it? I mean, I understand the private.
They are due, they are similar to any other property.
They're us. We are them. I mean, we are part of the township. Our fire station. Township's fire station. Well.
Last meeting, I believe, the city did not charge for its easement for this project. We could ask the township for that. They did not offer that. That is an interesting question. The library, we've already, we're going to be doing the library.
The ask was made?
The ask was made.
Okay.
Okay.
Wasn't one of the earlier ones, the library?
Yeah.
No, that's public property too.
How much do they pay for street lighting?
The same as all other properties.
Do they?
Yep, on a hundred basis.
All right, we do have ordinance 70-2022. Ms. Dow introduced it. Been moved and seconded for passage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 70-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Into the fifth one for tonight, 9E, Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last one for this evening is also a temporary construction easement with Brighty Investment Properties. That's basically Sylvania Center, right off the border here, going towards Monroe. Pedal detection. Whole, owns the whole thing. Amount of this easement is 3,288 dollars, and we recommend approval.
We do have ordinance 71-2022, Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 71-2022, and I will read by title only. Accepting a temporary construction easement from Brighty Investment Properties, LLC for the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project and Silica Bridge Drive Replacement Project, dedicating the temporary easement for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of 3,288 dollars. I move passage of ordinance number 71-2022 as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 71-2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 71-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure.
Thank you.
How many more approximately of these do we have coming?
Probably about 15. I think we have just over 20.
And these are all accounted for in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
We, actually, the values are coming in less than what we would budget, actually.
I did have a couple of the property owners contact me directly and tell me that they'd been contacted by the firm to work on easements, told them to get back to me if they had any concerns or didn't feel it was right, and I've heard from nobody.
It's not called, this project has gone quite well.
Hope it keeps going that way. It is a lot of work, and I just can't even imagine what attorneys went through to build the interstate system like I-473, 75 through town. Just imagine what work that took to assemble that right-of-way. All right, thank you. We're now up to Agenda Item 10. This is an item that was referred to the Planning Commission for property located at 4215 North McCord Road. It was quite a discussion and they, they came to the realization that to the north, which is Victoria Court, the distance from the property line to the new construction would be about the same as it would be if they were single-family homes, reflect what's on Victoria Court. But in between that would be this access road, which will be a private road, so they will have traffic closer to their house. A privacy fence is shown on the current drawing, which is necessary, I think by our code, but also to block headlights and things like that, people backing in and out of their driveways, not going into people's bedroom. On the south side are condominiums, most of which butt into the property sideways, so the sides of the condominiums are against the property. Some of those are as close, I think one of them is even closer to the property line than these proposed. This is a difficult site, this is what the proposals come in with. Again, it's a PD, so city council would have more control over what they are proposing. Once the zoning change is made, ownership can be changed, plans can be changed, but they have to meet a PD approval, city and.
The Planning Commission approved this with expectation that there would be further amendments to the, before council.
They approved the proposed zoning change based on the preliminary drawing they were given.
So we'll need five, we'll need five votes to change.
Correct.
Okay.
This one was, this one, this north on McCord Road was very contentious. There were neighborhood meetings going on, if you recall. We think that it's turned out very well. I have toured one of those units, one of the rental units in the middle, at the invitation of former Councilman Sandy Hussman, we went and gave them a home warming gift and they showed us around, and she was very pleased with it. She discussed it, that I wasn't too sure about these places, but they're very happy with it and with the way it's being managed. That doesn't mean you're going to end up with the same developer. Right now, it is, but all that can change.
Well, the, the neighbors haven't.
They have not. I would expect some of them are going to be quite interested.
I mean, they've, they've did a good job on this last of them. We have to be, we have to be very careful with this.
It's not an easy, an easy one. I agree.
And I know.
And I would hope by then you will have new plans based with the fire department's comments. Turnaround, that was shown on the west end, it's big enough to hardly to turn around a car, let alone a delivery truck or a fire truck. It was a back around, one where you pull forward, you back into the turnaround and you pull and turn right, getting out of it. So the only action required tonight is to set the public hearing date for September 6th.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, I move that we set a public hearing on ZA-2-2022, approved by the Planning Commission.
Is recommended.
I'm sorry, recommended by the Planning Commission for September 6th, 2022, and I think we ought to do that at probably 6:30?
Oh, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a number of interested citizens.
Yes. 6:30, 6:30 should be.
We can run into the council meeting if necessary.
For 6:30 on, number, 6, 2020.
Second. Been moved and seconded to set the public hearing date and advertise for a public hearing for ZA-2, ZA-1, 2022 for Tuesday, September 6th at 6:30 PM in these council chambers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the clerk is ordered to advertise and notify as necessary. Action required tonight. Moving on to Agenda Item 11. This is also a zoning issue. This was for ZA, excuse me, it was ZA-2, 2022. I was reading the next one. This one is ZA-1, 2022, and this was for the change of zoning proposed up on Alexis Road. This was discussed at the zoning committee meeting, and Mr. Hanam, I guess we should have a report of the zoning committee.
Yeah, and I left my briefcase at home, so I don't have notes. I'm going to do the best I can for recollection. But did have a zoning actuation committee meeting on July 7th, 2022, and it's actually, we considered it, considered this particular zoning ordinance as well as, as well as proposal to look at zoning generally from, what design? We recommended for, that we would at appropriate time, go forward, consider, or contract, get that on the agenda for tonight. We're going to do that in August.
There was no motion made in your committee meeting, so we're waiting direction. That, I wasn't at the meeting, but that's what was reported to me.
We'll deal with that after we deal with.
Yep.
This. this ordinance number 60-2022. And coming out of the meeting, we recommended approving the ZA-1-2022 as recommended by the
All right, you do have in your packets ordinance, 60, 2022, to approve that zoning change. If you'd like to introduce it tonight, Mr. Hanam.
I can do that. I would like to move adoption of ordinance number 60-2022, and I will read by title only, approving the recommendation of the municipal planning commission to approve petition for zoning order ordinance, amendment number ZA-1-2022 on the petition of the Hammond Brothers LLC to change the zoning of 5601 to 5609 West Alexis Road, Savannah, Ohio, and I move adoption of ordinance number 60- as an emergency.
Second. It moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 60, 2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 60, 2022 is enacted as an emergency measure.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have it on our agenda, but I would like to order legislation to adopt the Environmental Design Group Third Revision Proposal dated May 23rd, 2022 for August meeting.
Okay. Sorry, we didn't have that clarified before, but we didn't think it was a problem. Wait.
I don't think it is.
Let's have a motion to that effect.
I think I just made that.
I think you did. We need a second. It moved and seconded to prepare legislation for Michelle Johnson's proposed zoning code review. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and we'll have that ready for you at our next meeting on August 15th. I think, anything else you want to talk about from the zoning committee meeting, Mr. Hanam?
No, that's enough.
That's enough, I agree. Are there any other committee reports to be made at this time? Or committee referrals? Let's move on to added Agenda Item 13 then. Mr. Frye asked for a discussion of fireworks. Mr. Frye?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, obviously, I don't know how many of you were able to do the fireworks display that was, I guess the way I would characterize is better late than never, I suppose. I, I was actually at Centennial Terrace. I, I know Mr. McCann was as well. I don't recall seeing anybody else, but I may have missed you. If I, if I did, I apologize. The actual display itself appeared to me, and obviously we're doing things from 12 months of memory, it appeared to me to be a more significant display than what we had seen in past years, and I think that may have been Zambelli's way of saying we're sorry. But I have, and I imagine many of other members of council have a lot of questions about this. And I know that I've had some conversations with Mr. Sanford about getting somebody who is not the salesperson from Zambelli, because that person, you know, is the salesperson, and while his job is to take, take some flak, this decision obviously was made above his head, or at least I would assume that'd be the case. And I don't know whether we've got a confirmation of the potential attendance of someone from Zambelli at the August council meeting, by any chance, Mr. Sanford? Right. So there's a number of moving parts here, as you're all well aware. First, in a, in no particular order, I'm just going off the top of my head. My understanding is Mrs. Briney, we've paid half, is that correct?
That's correct.
We've not paid the other half, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? So we've not paid the original, the original down, we've not paid the original 50%? Okay. So that, so the entire balance for this year's display is still outstanding? For the entire amount that was, okay. Second, there's contractual circumstances that need to be evaluated in that the contract itself called for the display to be on the third, and obviously it wasn't. We have partners involved with this, as you recall, the city holds the contract, but the township is, is also a co-sponsor of this along and the trustees pay their 50% of the, of the non-amounts that are coming from Coca-Cola or other people who are sponsoring the program, so we have some obligation to them as well. So I was interested to hear what other members of councils' comments or concerns might be at, you know, at this, at this juncture. I clearly want, I believe that it would be helpful to have a meeting, get somebody in from Zambelli to give us some explanation. But I also want to, if at all possible, include the trustees in some form or fashion, since they, even though we hold the contract, they are also involved in this. I do believe that there was still significant attendance, but how strong it was at places that I wasn't, you know, I wasn't there, like Pace Center and local parties for the members and citizens of our community, I, I don't have any sense of that. It seemed like it was an awful fest of occasions still, but it certainly did not reach what we have seen in the past in my judgment on the third. Any other comments or questions?
I wanted to make a comment on attending the event. A positive was for Sajard to be able to pivot to the, to the eighth from the third, and I wanted to commend Mike McCann and Sajard and the other agencies involved in moving the event with the volunteers and staff of that event. It went off. Every person that I spoke with, interacted with that evening, it was very positive. And the, of course, the after, people were happy with the result. The show I thought was tremendous. But yes, I too would like to have some kind of a post-event discussion with the vendor and find out what our options are, what their, what, how their, how their decision-making came about, et cetera.
And I, I agree with you, Mr. McCann. I think that's commenting, you're right, I should have mentioned, and I apologize, our police officers, the Savannah Township Police Officers and our fire fighters from the township, as usual, were able to do that, as well as Sajard to rearrange their schedule and do all of that work, so we appreciate that that effort by all of those, all of those entities as well. So any other comments or questions?
I, I want to, oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
I wanted to say I also would like a meeting to discuss this further, and in particular, I would be interested in discussing for the point of no return date type of thing. I, I know there were assurances from the company sooner that they were good to go ahead, but then it was a very a very late notice that it wasn't going to work, and so I'm wondering, I, I, I'd be interested in having a conversation about whether in future contracts, whether for the fireworks or for other large events, if we could have some sort of, whether it'd be worth having some sort of clause of a, up until this date, you know, this is what it would be to cancel after this date, some, so that we have this in, in writing or some sort of known penalty, because they might have told us two weeks ahead if we'd have already had something written down saying what's going to happen if back out at the last. So I'd be interested in a conversation about cancellation dates.
For Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree as well with what Ms. Stowe said. I think we need to look at the contract and see if there's an opportunity to amend it as written, or if not, look at future to prevent that happening.
I agree with what all of you have said. I want to make sure we do this in the appropriate forum. Normally don't negotiate things at a city would pass ordinance. This might be more appropriate to put in a committee of the whole before the council meeting. Do it during a council meeting, but that's not normal procedure, and I don't know how it affects the township trustees. There are two or more of them, one to attend. We could just notify them of the meeting and their administrator and one member can come and no problem. But if more than that want to come, then it's a joint, but it not be a standard council meeting. It might be a joint meeting of your committee of the whole and them or something like. So there's two questions there. I, my personal opinion is that it'd be a committee meeting ahead of, and then you would take action at a council meeting if you're making a change to the remaining year on the contract. And then it really seems like, yeah, I don't invite, I, township trustees will have to find out their joint meeting with them or just send their administrator and one representative. Doesn't require a joint.
I, I concur with you, Mayor. I think it should be before council, I think. But we need to hear back from company on their timeframe. Obviously, you have the one meeting in August. If we need some other timeframe, I suppose that's possible, but bluntly, I would prefer to be in front of a council meeting if possible. Sanford, you comment?
Should notify Sajard leadership as well. Um, my recommendation is that you have a motion to schedule a committee of the whole meeting on August the 15th at 7 o'clock or something like that. They can't make it, we'll just let you know that, push that meeting to another date. That's all right.
Fine with that, Mayor. I'll make that, I'll make a motion to schedule a committee of the whole regarding the conversation with Zambelli, fireworks, with people from Zambelli in attendance, so I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved and seconded to schedule a committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August the 15th at 7 o'clock, or do you think it should be earlier?
There's gonna be some, I think there's gonna be some interested parties.
There could be a lot of speakers.
I think there should be. Mr. Sanford?
We can set it and we'll just, we'll just cancel it, but we need to set it, or we can't do it. If they can't come, we just will not have that meeting and we'll set another one in September.
Let's, let's schedule it for 6:30, because I probably have 15 or 20 minutes of questions by myself. Depending on the person who's from Zambelli who actually shows up.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded to have a scheduled committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August 15th at 7:30 PM in these council chambers. 6:30, excuse me, to discuss fireworks, the fireworks contract. Was there a second?
Yes.
Marcus was the second. I thought so. I'm not sure what time I said, but I meant 6:30. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will let both the township trustees and Sajard know, and they will need to declare a meeting of themselves if they're gonna come in more than administrator and one member of, of one township trustee. Oh, good. We're off to the start and we will, Mr. Sanford will keep you notified as to whether that date's going to hold or not.
We haven't approved the change to the contract. So, in town, we have to approve the change to the that's in our charter.
I don't know that I'm in a position, Mr. Schrader, to make a comment about the, I mean, I can give you my personal opinion, but, but I think that's an administrative decision on on payment based upon the terms and conditions of the contract as it stands.
Did the contract call for a 50% advance payment?
Almost for sure. Going from my recollection.
That's, I know we've had in the past.
Yes.
In which case I think that can be made, but we can't make any more than that. But you have, you're making more of a statement if you withhold, withhold. They only gave you an invoice for the whole amount. You can't pay that, or we shouldn't pay that.
If the, I thought the contract called for 50%.
But they did not submit an invoice for that amount. When they're told that we're not gonna pay it, they may submit a revised invoice for that. Right now, I
I, I mean, I, I don't want to, you know, I think we, we had not only, my recollection, I haven't looked at the contract in two years, at least.
I have.
I know you've looked at it more recently.
I have, as you might imagine.
And there is a 50%.
There is a 50%, my recollection is there's a 50% clause.
That we would have paid in June something.
That's always due in February.
Yeah, that was supposed to be due well before this, that they didn't, apparently invoices on. And if they don't invoice this, we're, you know, obviously the
Okay, well, I just want to say on the record, I don't want to, I don't want to damage our relationship. I think, you know, the what I want to do is fix this relationship. I don't want to damage it. So, you know, if, if tell them the invoices for half and we'll dress the rest of it in, in August. As we need to, because council needs to amend the contract, has changed the date. Dates are
The dates for invoicing?
No, for the performance.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yes, fifth, third and the fifth.
You can tell them, we, you know, we don't mean to stiffen. We want to talk to them, and council needs to act because the date's in the contract and the charter requires us to amend, amend, approve an amendment to the contract to the different date. How's that? Yeah.
Right. Right, and to me, that's, that's, that's the key. We got to understand the balls and the strikes of what occurred, using the baseball analogy of how did we get to that position? And as Stowe's point, how did we get to that position, you know, when the, when the clock was, you know, gonging six on midnight? You know, four days in advance rather than four weeks in advance, which would have given us potentially some other avenue.
Right. We have that committee of the whole meeting scheduled. We'll keep you posted. That's the last agenda item. For information items, this, we had D distributed to your seats tonight. This is your quarterly reports, which I always encourage you to review and put in your binders. If there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until their next regular meeting four weeks from tonight, on Monday, August the 15th at 7:30 PM, following a committee of the whole meeting.